So we will go ahead and call our meeting to order. And our first order of business will be to everybody please stand and let's recite the pledge of allegiance. Colonel, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everybody please join me in a moment of silence, please. All right, first up on our agenda is our agenda approval. And I know we have, we want to go ahead and pull the mosaic management consulting lease out of the consent agenda. We will move it down to county manager business AC. And Colonel, did you have a change you wanted to make as well?
Yes, I need to move 2D to 8D. The cops grant emergency management communication tower funding.
All right.
Just provide some explanations and content to that one.
And then we will also need to, do we need to amend the agenda to accommodate going back into our closed session meeting as well?
You recessed that previous.
We recessed, so we don't need to make an official.
Chairman, we're also, 8E is in your packet tonight. It is labeled 2G, I believe. Manny, what's the one for the grant?
8C.
It's 8C in the packet, needs to become 8E.
It's on the table.
It's on the table in front of you. You're adding C, D, and E to the model of county manager.
8C clarification for 8D except for the economic development grant program?
Yes, ma'am.
So 8E is the economic development grant program proposal.
Yes, sir.
Information. It's stuck in the annuals contract. Stuck to the back of the annuals contract, right there. Yeah? So that's going to be 8E. All right. All right, any other corrections, adjustments, alterations to the agenda? Hearing none. This time I'll entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as modified. Motion by Vice Chairman Hensley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. The modified agenda is approved. Up next is consent agenda. Consent agenda now contains, with the items that we have struck from the consent agenda and moved out, we have the Elderberry Nursing Home Transportation Contract, the Madison Health and Rehab Transportation Contract, the infrastructure, the Highway 213 Water Infrastructure Fund Capital Project Ordinance, the Madison County Public Library's Telehealth Network Association Memorandum of Understanding, the 2025 County Governmental Offices and Solid Waste Holiday Schedule, the opioid settlement funds amendment settlement project ordinance, and approval of the November 12th meeting minutes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve that consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Hensley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Consent agenda is approved. Our next topic of business is public comment. We've got, looks like five folks that have signed up to speak for public comment. And for those of you that have never done it before, public comment, you come up to the podium over here, there's a microphone there, so everybody that's watching online can hear you as well. You've got three minutes to say whatever's on your mind and is not a interaction, this is public comment. So you get to say, you get to say whatever's on your mind, but don't expect a reaction in kind, just want to let everybody know that. And our clerk will also act as our timekeeper, and when three minutes are up, we will notify you and let you know. So first up is Josh Kopus, Josh. And Alex Weber, you're on deck.
This is the microphone?
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks.
All right. Josh, I'll tell you what, let's, before we start running the clock, introduce yourself and tell us who you're here to represent, and then we'll go from there. And if everybody else will do the same thing, that'd be great.
Yes, my name is Josh Kopus. I'm the older owner of the Old Marshall Jail Hotel and Ziegler's Restaurant. Both of those businesses are located in the Old Marshall Jail in downtown Marshall, and I'm here to represent any business owner, resident, or person who cares about Marshall who couldn't come here to speak tonight.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
The floor's yours, sir.
Fantastic. I'm just here to say to the world that I think Marshall, downtown Marshall, I'm going to speak for my own experiences tonight. I know that a lot of people in Madison County are hurting in Hot Springs, and people lost their homes throughout, but I'm going to speak specifically about my experiences in downtown Marshall. And I just want to say that I think we've done an incredible job of cleaning up. We showed up on the first day, I feel like we're not the kind of people that waited for anyone to come and help us. I watched people bring their own machines, tractors, trackos, skid steers, like we, I feel like we just ran the cleanup effort, just because that's the only thing we do to do. We're entering a phase right now where the initial cleanup and remediation, I feel like this was very obvious. We had a lot of volunteers, honestly, it was pretty cheap to do. And right now, what I think we're faced with is that everyone in downtown Marshall is trying to figure out how to put their businesses back together, and we're realizing that it's just going to take a ton of money. And so I just am asking our county commissioners and anyone who's listening tonight, that, you know, anything that y'all can do to help us, we're doing a great job with the resources that we have, but we need funding. We need tons and tons of money to put this town back together. So I appreciate all that you all have done, and, you know, I look forward to working with you guys in the future, and just any help that our county can give us. I mean, I believe in government's ability to help the citizens of this county, and I really would love to see that happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Yep.
Up next, Alex, Alex Weber. And Reese Edwards, you're up next.
Hi, I'm Alex Weber, I'm another small business owner in downtown Marshall. Just started.
It's all good, yes ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here in behalf of small, the small business community on South Main in downtown, businesses like Hunter's Auto, The Depot, The Tag Office, Little Hole, and our own business, On Your Bike, all devastated by recent events. We are a community facing a critical moment, one where decisions made today will determine whether we rebuild as a vibrant town or risk becoming a ghost town. Having lived through the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina in New Orleans, I've seen firsthand how small businesses can make or break a community's recovery. In New Orleans, the rebuilding efforts weren't just about restoring buildings, they were about restoring the heart of the city, its culture, its identity, and the businesses that gave the city its soul. Marshall is at that same crossroads now. We have our own unique character and charm, but without a concerted effort to support small businesses, we risk losing the very things that make this town special. If we don't act now, we will see more empty storefronts along Main Street and complete voids in the south end of town, which as you know, was hit particularly hard. Take Hunter's Auto, for example, this is a family-owned business that has served this community for years. It's more than just a auto repair shop, it's a trusted neighbor and a cornerstone of the town. The Depot, too, an iconic part of Marshall's downtown, is a venue that draws people in with its local flavor and charm. Without support, places like these may never be able to reopen their doors, and will not only lose their services, the sense of community they provide. We have a critical need to revitalize downtown, and particularly the south end of town. This area is full of potential, but it needs investment and attention. We need help attracting new businesses to this part of Marshall, so it doesn't stay empty and forgotten. With the right support, we could bring in a mix of local businesses that help to reestablish the town's character and draw visitors and residents alike throughout the entire town. That's why I'm asking for two things today. One, immediate and focused financial support for small businesses, whether it's grants or other forms of assistance, businesses like Hunter's Auto, The Depot, my own, and many others need help to get back on their feet. We need a streamlined process that allows us to rebuild quickly, retain jobs, and provide essential services that this community depends on. Two, support for revitalizing the south end and attracting new businesses. Marshall has every chance to be a thriving town again, but we need targeted investment in the south end for it to achieve this potential. I ask the county board to consider creating programs or incentives that encourage businesses to invest in downtown, and particular the south end of town. With the right support, we can attract businesses that will not only help Marshall recover, but help grow. Marshall has always been a town to the heart, a town where people support one another, and this disaster has shown us how strong we are together. If we can provide the right kind of support for our small businesses, we can continue to build on the core of community and to go beyond just restoring buildings. We can ensure the businesses that define Marshall remain a vital part of our community for years to come. I learned two things.
Alex, we're at three minutes, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I've got to cut you off, thank you. Thank you very much. Up next, Reese Edwards, and then on deck, Rick Mollin.
Good evening, my name is Reese Edwards, my husband and I, we own and operate downtown Marshall, or downtown brew house, or Macca Brew House and Marshall Pizza Kitchen. I'm here just to kind of represent all of downtown Marshall. We moved to Asheville, or moved from Asheville to Marshall in 2014. We fell in love with the quaint dank downtown. We really wanted to work in a county we lived in, so we purchased our building and renovated it over two years. We opened in 2016, and since this time, we have hosted countless birthday parties, graduation parties, baby showers, Christmas toy drives, Cub Scout inquest, Little League events, and participated in safety, giving out hundreds of dollars worth of candy every year. We are two very involved individuals within our county and downtown Marshall. I have been heavily involved with the downtown Marshall Association for the past eight years, serving as secretary, vice president, and president of the DMA. I coached volleyball at Madison High School, my husband coaches youth basketball, and was a former Cub Scout leader. We are not from Madison County, but our two boys are from Madison County. We have enjoyed living and working in the county, and we hope to continue to do so, though we need more grant funding. Forty percent of all businesses don't reopen after a disaster, and downtown Marshall wants to be sure that we can have close to 100% of the businesses reopening. We know that our businesses bring people into our county to spend money, which leads to tax revenue. Without us, that tax revenue will decline. We are currently rebuilding, but we do not have enough money to get fully open at this time. I've applied for $35,000 worth of grants, but those are not guarantees. My question is, what are the commissioners doing to secure grant funding for downtown Marshall? We can't do this without your help. I need downtown Marshall, businesses need downtown Marshall, residents need downtown Marshall, my 19 employees need downtown Marshall, my boys need downtown Marshall, and the county needs downtown Marshall. I hope the commissioners and county managers are doing everything possible to secure funding for our downtown Marshall businesses. We know this is new to everybody, no one's been through a flood like this before, so we know everybody's doing their best, but as a small business owner, we just ask that you guys do everything possible to try to secure grants that we are able to apply for to get open again. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Thank you very much. Rick, you're up, and then last one on deck is Joel Freeman. Floor's yours, Rick.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Rick Mollin, and I'm here representing Connie Mollin, my wife, who was a member of the downtown Marshall Association, so I'm going to start the clock. Connie cannot be here, and she's asked me to speak on her behalf. She is a part owner of Flow Gallery, which is a 14-year business in downtown Marshall across from the courthouse. I know at least three of you have shopped there. Flow depends on the last three months of the year to earn 40% of its revenue. Without it, the year is a total bust. Like all the downtown businesses and our courthouse, Flow had floodwater, 87 inches of floodwater inside the gallery. As the waters receded, it was a jumbled, muddy mess. Artist's work was swept out the door or dashed to the floor as the tide ebbed and the, ed, and the river turned back. Shop furniture was lost and destroyed. The good news is that 75% of the artwork was saved and has been returned to the artists, 25% was lost. It's the intention of Flow to reopen in the spring. Flow's landlord has been incredibly supportive and has been quick to act on rehabilitating the gallery space. We had hoped for government and private grants to be available, but the reality is they're not materializing yet. Small business, low-interest loans are an option, but they're not what we need to survive. Flow depends on the buying public, just as many downtown Marshall and Hot Springs businesses do. Forty percent of that buying public is local to Madison County. The other 60% come from outside the county. It's a symbiotic relationship. Flow needs the town's visitors, and the town's visitors need places to shop, like Flow. We need the buying public to return to Marshall. I praise you, the commissioners, for bringing in the state and federal big guns to tour the flood-rackaged downtown business area and pledge their support and commitment, that they have our backs, and that Marshall won't be forgotten. We need that, and the financial infusion it suggests. We need to know that was not just political rhetoric. We know that you will do all you can to help Madison County's tourism return, because we, that's the government, the people, and the business community, depend on the tourism dollars the visitors bring in. I'll echo the other business owners, let us know what we can do to help you, your, you, that's you, and our elected officials, and the managers of our county departments, Mr. Honey, Mr. Goode, to get the monetary assistance available and to open up fresh avenues of state and federal funding to help us recover. Marshall can come back, it will come back strong, we know Marshall will be back strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All right, and last but not least, Joel. Hey, Joel.
Yes?
Floor's yours, sir.
Thank you. My name's Joel Freeman, I own Zuma Coffee, and I'm here to reiterate what my fellow business owners in downtown Marshall have said. And I also like Joshua, make it more of a personal. I rolled into town about 23 years ago, and nobody knew who I was. I didn't know who anybody was. But in that 23 years, I have seen community built, and I've seen it happen through downtown Marshall. I've seen it happen through small businesses, I've seen it happen through the residents who live there, and it's made Marshall what we like to call Magic Town now. It's been important in my life, it's given me an opportunity to have a business, to help create community, and to be there when people need me. What we're asking for you guys now is to be there for us when we need you guys. Thank you for being here, that's what y'all need to do.
Thank you, Joel. All right. This time, that is the last individual that has signed up for public comment, this time I entertain a motion that we close public comment.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Hensley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. I encourage you guys to stick around tonight, we do have a topic that was added to the agenda that we will be discussing in order to try to kind of give you guys a little bit of insight as to what may potentially be coming down the pipe, so I encourage you all to stick around. Up next, though, our next order of business is a resolution tonight, and we want to, we want to do a resolution. We all know, in addition to the businesses that were damaged, lost, and affected, we also lost someone very near and dear to Madison County family, and that will be Major Quintero. So at this time, I have a resolution that I would like to read into, into order, I'm sorry. Yeah, we can, if you want, you want to do it that way? Sure. At this time, I would like to have the Quintero family and sheriff, would you mind to come If you don't care, maybe just over here, next to, in front of Rod's desk, if you guys don't care. Sheriff, you want to introduce your team?
I'm Buddy Harwood, I'm the sheriff. This is Coy Phillips, my chief deputy. This is Ashlyn Quintero, Major Quintero's daughter. This is Isaac Quintero, Major Quintero's son, who was a former Marine, got out of the Marine Corps just a few months ago and came to work for us.
And for those that don't know, Coy is Major Quintero's brother as well. So whereas Major Michelle Lynn Elliott Quintero started her career with the Madison County, North Carolina Sheriff's Office on June 4th, 2007, whereas Major Quintero faithfully served the citizens of Madison County for over 17 years as a telecommunicator, telecommunicator supervisor, administrative assistant to the sheriff, sworn deputy, operations captain, and most recently, the jail administrator. And whereas Major Quintero was an exceptional professional leader with strong work ethic and commendable dedication to the criminal justice system, and whereas Major Quintero was sworn sheriff's deputy who exemplified distinguished honor and integrity, and whereas Major Quintero was an exemplary role model and inspiration to her employees, coworkers, sworn law enforcement partners, and state juvenile justice colleagues, and whereas Major Quintero was a jail administrator that always set the bar high while championing wise and judicious local and state detention facility policies, and whereas Major Quintero had a genuine love and devotion to her faith, family, friends, and the inmates she managed and nurtured. And whereas Major Quintero sacrificed her time, energy, and ultimately, her life, faithfully serving the good of all humanity, she is worthy of a special honor and a public recognition as sworn law enforcement officer, supervisor, leader, friend, mother, grandmother, wife, and sister in Christ. Now therefore, by my decree in the Madison County Board of Commissioners, it is ordered, section one, that this board sets December 20th, 2020, 20, excuse me, 2024, as Major Michelle Quintero Day in honor of her birthday and her unwavering sacrificial service to the county of Madison. Section two, that this board pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 17F-20 shall award to Major Quintero's husband, Isaac V. Quintero, Quintero, sorry, the badge worn by Major Quintero in service to the county of Madison. And in section three, that this board pursuant to General Statute 17F-20 shall award to Major Quintero's son, Madison County Deputy Isaac D. Quintero, the handgun Major Quintero carried in service to the county of Madison. This resolution adopted this day, the 10th day of December 2024, by the chairman and the board of commissioners from Madison County, North Carolina. I make that in the form of a motion, all in, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garrison, is there any discussion? I would like to add that Major Quintero will be deeply missed by each and every one of us. She served the citizens of this county tremendously well. It was my honor to be able to honor her family at Land of Sky, at our regional council meeting last week, where we presented the family with a plaque of recognition. There is also going to be an award from Land of Sky that will be elaborated on a little bit later by our county manager. But anyway, all that being said, I've had the opportunity to work with Major Quintero briefly compared to what the family has spent with her, but found her to be one of the greatest people on the face of this earth, and she will be sadly missed. So was there any additional discussion, any comments anybody would like to make this Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and I will sign those resolutions, I want to give each and every one of you guys a copy of those before we go, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys, thank you all very much. Thank you for sharing her with us.
And so you know, from Land of Sky, this came in late last night, North Carolina Regional Council in partnership with Pacific Local Foundation, provided $5,000 to the families of each first responder who lost their lives due to Hurricane Lee. So you know that that's coming down the pipe, and I appreciate what you want to do.
Thank you, everybody. And if we can hold up. And if we can hold up just long enough, I want to go ahead and sign these now and make sure that the family gets those, okay?
While you're doing it, just a moment of privilege.
Yes, sir.
That's our other. I also want to acknowledge that Major Quintero was acknowledged, her sacrifice.
... at the Land of Sky last week, but Commissioner Wechtle, or Chairman Wechtle was as well, and I'd like to read that. Just as a point, sometimes people don't realize the hours that Matt puts in, and so I think it's a good opportunity in time just to acknowledge him as well. Now, he was given a plaque, and the plaque says, "The Robert C. Paris Senior Intergovernmental Relations Award, dedicated in 2000 to annual honor a leader who has improved in intergovernmental cooperation in the Land of Sky region, presented to Matthew Wechtle for his contributions to Madison County and the Land of Sky Regional Council. Chairman Wechtle has served the council for many years, including as the Land of Sky Rural Planning Organization Board Chair. His leadership and dedicated service on behalf of Madison County and the region are a reminder of what public service is about. And I appreciate your leadership."
Well, that's very kind, and I appreciate that. It was, it pales in comparison to what Major Quintero has done for this county, and I don't want to take away from that anyway whatsoever, but I also want to say that while the award had my name on it, it was truly a team effort. This board of commissioners, the town of Marshall, the town of Mars Hill, the town of Weaverville leadership as well, Forrest Gilliam, and Norris Gentry, previously to Colonel Honeycutt, Manny, Carrie, the staff, Ross, everybody played a role in that, so I'm very grateful for that. And those are the resolutions there, and I appreciate it very much. But at this time, I would, I want everybody's thoughts and prayers to be with the Quintero family, and I appreciate the sacrifices that that family has made and the sacrifice that Major Quintero made for this county for all the years that she served us. And so please keep the Quintero family and the sheriff in your thoughts and prayers as we go into the holiday season and beyond. We appreciate it very much.
Appreciate yous being here tonight. Thank you.
Very much so.
Appreciate y'all doing it.
All right. Unfortunately, business goes on, and we, next topic of business is going to be a good news update, from what I understand. And not to put any pressure on you at all, Elizabeth, to have to bring us some good news, but at this time, the Cooperative Extension Director, Elizabeth Ayers, is going to give us an update on cooperative extension and activities and whatnot that's happening currently.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for putting me on the agenda for some good news. So just wanted to introduce myself. Like you said, Elizabeth Ayers, the building that you're sitting in, if you don't know, is the extension office, semi courthouse, and we're thankful we're able to house those that did this place, so we're thankful for the building that we're in. If Jamie can... We've got a slideshow, so we did a building dedication on the River of the Eighth. This is the old office, it's going to roll pretty quick, but we were above Zoom, so we used to be neighbors with Joel. It was home electric way back when. And over 20, no, was it 20 years ago? 18, 17, 18 years ago, this building was purchased by the county, thank you, and was turned into the Park of Extension by the envisionment of Ross Gilliam. So we surprised him with dedicating the building to him on the River of the Eighth. I was proud of us, we did a really good job, we kept it a secret, but his vision was what created this space. And as y'all know, no more important than during Hurricane Helene, this center became the main distribution and receiving hub for the county. So we're so thankful that his vision of community, his vision of what farmers were going to need with the buyout of 2,000 bores tobacco, that value-added center, we have a level of 400, or loading trucks and value-added kitchens and shared use facility with machinery that farmers wouldn't have the capability to build and purchase on their own. All those things happened because of his heart for the community, his heart for the farmers, his heart for families, community development. We are so, so thankful for him. Audrey Raker came and spoke, who ran Madison Farms. Harvey Franklin, who was the former agriculture teacher that really led Ross into the opportunity for college. You know, Ross said, "I don't think college is for me. You know, the money's just not there, the opportunity's not there." And Mr. Franklin said, "Oh, yes, it is." And because of that, his journey started, he became director. We didn't, you know, he retired, I will always call him boss man, but you know, he turned around and worked for, I mean, did he take a day off between retiring from extension and working for the county? I don't think so, maybe five minutes.
Not much.
No, not much. No much, no much. So there's a plaque that comes into the honor room that's in his name. We also, he doesn't know this, he'll hate us forever, but there'll be a bronze plaque on the building of the door when you come in with the space on it. He doesn't know that, of course, he's listening. But just want to tell you, Ross, 31 years of service, millions of dollars in grant money to make this happen. This used to be the old glove factory. This was the old Capitola Glove Factory for Marshall that moved up here in the 80s. But I would come with my dad to buy gloves and golf to the window where Megan now works. So just what a creative vision Ross had, knowing that it would turn into such a community hub and was so needed. So just wanted to bring that good news. We had advisory council members there. We have people from NC State University was there, a which district director was here. His whole family came, which was the, you know, that's when he looked at me and gave him the side eye, you know, when like his family walked in. But I'm thankful that we were able to surprise him. So the good news, so this is now the Rushing Dedicated Cooperative Extension. So we're thankful for bringing this good news.
Excellent. Thank you, Elizabeth. Next order of business is Child Fatality Task Team Report by Health Director Tammy Cody.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I have for you tonight your annual Child Fatality Prevention Team, CFT for short. This is a local team that reviews the deaths of children under the age of 18 who were born alive in residents of North Carolina at the time of their death. The team seeks to identify and reduce preventable child fatalities through systemic, multidisciplinary, multi-agency reviews of child fatalities, and use data-driven recommendations for legislative and public policy initiatives. The purpose of the reviews is to identify system problems, make recommendations for prevention of future fatalities, and act on those recommendations whenever possible. A death of a child is always a terrible thing, and it's not something that we want to talk about, but I'm honored to chair this team because I take this very seriously, and if there's recommendations or things that we can do to prevent another one from happening, that's exactly what we want to do. It takes about a year for us to get all the information back, so these are not 24 deaths that we'll review when they're 2023. And Paul said that we had a death in 2023. Fortunately, we only had one to review all year, so that's the good news. This one death that we reviewed was the death of a teenager, and the cause of death was multiple blood force injuries, and this involved a young inexperienced driver, happened to be driving above the speed limit, and our recommendation was to continue educating all of our teenagers about safe speed limits and safe driving. The other thing that we focused some time and energy on was improving road safety, and the thing that we looked at with that is where this accident occurred, the guardrails stopped just shy of the curve and the tree that was hit, and so our recommendation was to extend those guardrails beyond that, that could possibly have prevented the death. We also discussed adding some rubble strips or reflectors in that area, and it was noted that proper signage, including the speed limit and curb ahead, are in place. It is very tragic. We hate that that has happened, but we're pleased that we'll probably discuss any one death tonight. Any questions?
Were the recommendations forwarded to NC DOT, or where have they gone so far?
Yes, sir. I'm working on that.
I agree with you. If you need any help with that, let me know.
Thank you.
With contact.
Okay.
Any other questions, folks? Thank you, Tam.
Thanks, Tam.
Thanks for coming in. Have a great night. All right, our next business item tonight is Carrie Lefford, Finance Officer, with Budget Amendment Number 6.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good evening, gentlemen. So before you find Item A, this is Amendment Number 6, you'll see that we have donations to Madison County's Hurricane Helene Fund, additions of $7,015, bringing the total of $44,000. Also, see donations to your transportation department in the amount of $500. filing recording of the project ordinance, accession law 2023-134, that you just approved in the consent agenda. Here are two, filing recording of additional revenue generated by the core sense sales tax in the amount of $43,165.42. And all these amendments are pending your approval.
Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number 6. Motion by Vice Chairman Hensley. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Garrison. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, you'll find the members' financial reports. We are 41.65% into FY '25. You'll see that for our general fund, we've received 25.17% of our revenue, and our expenses are at 28.21. Both the revenue and expenses are well below where we could be at this point.
And more importantly, revenue is catching up to the expenses so far?
They are holding steady, and by next month, I assure you that we will be on track. I hope so.
Very good. Any questions in regards to the financial report for the Mad finance officer? Hearing none, you're off the hook. Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate it very much. Up next is our county manager's report, Item Number 8, Colonel Rod Honeycutt, and our first order of business.
Chairman, can I?
Yes, sir.
Can I just just schedule a little bit based off of the comment tonight and bring Brad's up top?
Well, we already approved the agenda. I don't want to cause a problem for Mandy. This won't take long, I don't think, so we should be able to get there. Would you agree, Mad, that it causes a problem?
I'd have to accommodate the question.
Let's just stick with it. We can knock through this pretty quick.
Do we go to tab 8A?
All right, so we have four positions that are available. First one is going to be a reappointment or potential reappointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and at this time, I would recommend that we reappoint Robert Chambers to that board. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Then we have three spots on the planning board, and do we need, can we do all three at once, or do we need to do them individually? They're all for three-year terms?
I think if you want to do them all three at once, as long as you clearly state their name, that's all.
All right, we can do them as a slate. So we have three positions on the planning board that have just kind of occurred naturally through attrition. Is, at this time, I will entertain a motion to nominate individuals for those three available
Nominate Terry Burnett.
Terry Burnett? Okay, we have one, we have got, we've got one. Is there?
I'll nominate Robin Reeves.
Nomination for Robin Reeves?
This is a Spring Creek person.
Yep.
I'll nominate Wayne Brigman.
All right. Are there any additional nominations? This time, I entertain a motion that nominations be closed.
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Garrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Hensley. Almost made it without screwing it up tonight. So the second is by Vice Chairman Hensley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this is in favor, closed nominations, all in favor? All right, so we have a slate of, we have Terry Burnett, Robin Reeves, and Wayne Brigman have been nominated, and I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Hensley. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? All right, those three are approved unanimously. Coming up, let's see, that's all we've got for December. We'll have some more that roll on in, let's see, coming up in January, so, very good. All right, Colonel, up next is Emergency Medical Services Contract.
Gentlemen, in front of you, you have the Massimetic Contract. This is from the year 2025 through 2030. It represents a 3% increase per year of $52,000 with a base of about $1.7 million. Tonight, this is for information only. I'm still in negotiations with Massimetic, but Craig, he knows the desire that we originally talked 3.5 versus 3. So when you see this in January, it will be the result of negotiations. This is where, right now, just as a read ahead, so it's your question.
Colonel, can we just make sure that that's up for approval in January, whatever it is? Just want to make sure we engage that contract in the sufficient amount of time for him to make whatever capital investments are necessary moving forward for the next coming year.
Hannah's had a look at it and has done an initial review, and Donnie now has, sometime we get into January, we'll have a both legal review and procurement review complete and ready for a motion for the board.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, so your questions, that's all I have on the Massimetic Contract.
Any additional questions on the contract at this time? I suspect we'll have someone to have a chance to review it and dig into it a little bit deeper. All right, and up next is the Mosaic Management Lease.
Gentlemen, the Mosaic Management Lease is a result of the downtown devastation to the district attorney's office and the courthouse. We had to do a lease of a corner office with Mosaic Management with Pete Litlock for $700 a month for the next year. As we figure out where the DA office is going into temporary facilities, I confirmed with him the day, he was making a 90-day notice to break the contract, if he's okay with that, then we'll put that in there. It is fully 100% FEMA funded as a result of Hurricane Helene and its damages. Gentlemen, so it's your questions on this one.
I guess probably the best way to say it, we expect it to be 100% FEMA reversible, correct?
No, it is.
We've already had an approval.
Project worksheet's complete.
Okay. Very good.
Say that again, that will answer it. I think that will answer a question.
It is FEMA reversible because of Hurricane Helene, and we added to the project worksheets with the rest of expenses associated with Hurricane.
And with 90 days notice, either party can break the lease, correct?
Are we, is that bill in the occupy at this time?
They are in it, working out of it now, the DA's office, and they lost their courthouse space. They needed an additional corner office, and that will tie into the temporary facilities and relocating them to the new facilities.
So it's got power and heat?
Yes, sir. We've moved filing cabinets and work stuff off the second floor this week to the DA's office, to the new office. I say we, the maintenance department did. I'm going to make sure I get the chair that's changed. There was some heavy lifting.
Jesse and his crew?
Yes.
Appreciate those guys.
Thanks for that, Dick.
No worries. Any additional questions?
I just think maybe at some point, you board a little better brief on courthouse status up tonight.
Questions?
And Sprinkle Shell, you'll be as well.
Donnie, any comments?
No, I'm aware of the, we just need to make sure we have it in the contract. I'm aware of the, we just need to make sure we have it in the contract.
And so at this time, I'll entertain a motion as modified to include the language for the 90-day notice in order to break the lease. I'll entertain that, entertain a motion that, this time? I'll make it in form of a motion to make it easy. How's that? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garrison. Any discussion?
Colonel, does that include the additional parking as well?
It does not. It's not included in the lease. That's a separate contract with a separate, what was it, section, correct?
It's the same individual.
Same individual, but different lease.
Different business, different business.
But I don't think that changed anything, did it? The parking that we already were having.
It does not change, it's not changed the contract. We've entered into parking. This was individual potentially in the parking of courthouse previously.
So just fresh in my memory, this current space we're occupying in this building, we're having to pay a separate contract for that person to park somewhere else?
Yes.
Or to park there in the building?
We have a lease for parking for the courthouse spaces. And that building, the neighbors that were building has parking with it. So I would assume the DA's office will be able to utilize that unless.
I'll just make sure it's two leagues. I'm pretty sure the DA parks in that parking lot with that building. Just wanted to, as far as completing the staff in that same parking lot. Anything else for security purposes?
Any additional questions? All right. We have a motion, a second. At this time, we move to a vote. All in favor? All right. We've got the lease. Up next is the COPS Emergency Management Communication Tower Funding Acceptance.
We had to pull this one off of the agenda because of, so procurement, with the change of day, I'll ask Donnie and I with this and the reason we pulled it off and asked to hold on this one.
We can either put that on hold and take it off of that, but the power is subject to a closed session if you want to deal with it tonight.
You have any desire to deal with that tonight in closed session?
So I'll ask, we table it?
You want to table it?
I'd like to table it because I can bring Hannah in to make sure that her and Donnie and I are on the same sheet immediately before we go forward.
Fair enough. Hannah's here?
I think we did, Hannah, Hannah's the one providing the registration.
You got her here, but I didn't ask her to stay for a later closed session. I don't want to volunteer for something that happened in coordination.
Very good. Let's table it and give the Colonel the opportunity to get it all pulled together. We can deal with this. It's not super time sensitive, I guess, correct?
This probably, no.
We have an extension of December 31st to have the funding.
You said December 31st?
Are you prepared to stay here tonight for a little bit?
I can, but you.
Okay. You want to do that? All right. So we would need to do that in a closed session, and that would be attorney-client privilege? Or what would that be, Donnie?
It would be attorney-client.
Okay.
Can we add that?
We will.
We got one more topic to cover before we're complete tonight.
I guess my question, Donnie, is can that, can we do that considering that was part of the agenda this far as closed session?
It doesn't have to be, just as long as the COPS grants is on, is on in the board candidate. Close session to discuss it.
Very good. So no additional agenda operations necessary?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. All right. Colonel?
I'll ask Brad to come up, talk through this next grant. But I want to give the board a quick update. November 20th to 21st, I had the opportunity to go to Washington, D.C. And I got to meet with the President, our senators, our House of Representatives, the FEMA lead, San Diego Academy members. And this is a message I carried on behalf of Madison County. I request $193.8 million for public assistance with a quest of $128.7 million as to restore our government buildings. For mitigation for flood work and damage along the banks of the river, we ask for $25.6 million. For resiliency, future and economic development, we ask for $20.5 million. For long-term housing, $8 million. With a previous legislative request of $11 million, brought our total to $193.8 million. The state recently passed $227 million. The money that we requested, I'm part of a larger delegation representing four counties in western North Carolina. We requested a large amount. The President has requested from Congress $97 billion. That $97 billion will service, will service four disasters. The Baltimore Bridge, the Maui Fires, Hurricane Helene, and the hurricane in Florida.
No.
Milton. The 20th of December is a critical date. You need to watch Congress and what they pass. Why was that? I asked for that money not to go to the state, but come straight allocated to Madison County. There's a lot of pushback right now, but we don't need anybody else helping us. But there's restrictions that are in place. But I want you to know that we hear what you're talking about. It's from our hearts, and we carried a good message. Now we just need our federal, state representatives to take care of this. If that, since you're close to the guidance, I'll turn it over to Brad.
Good, Colonel.
Chairman and Commissioners, the Economic Development Board met in their November meeting and is making a recommendation to you to consider establishing a facade grant and building rehabilitation grant program. You may have heard of these type of grant programs before because they're pretty prevalent in North Carolina, especially in downtowns. They're very widely recognized as effective revitalization tools and used across North Carolina. These programs support economic development by preserving the historic character of downtown areas, attracting investment, enhancing the visual appeal of downtowns. Madison Economic Development Board recommends establishing a matching grant program to assist owners of destroyed buildings and rebuilding after the devastation caused by Hurricane Helene. The program will provide $5,000, and these are all things that you could adjust, but they would provide $5,000 in matching funds for eligible facade and building rehabilitation projects within downtown Hot Springs and downtown Marshall, National Register Historic Districts. And the initiative aims to promote economic vitality and preserve the unique historic character of these communities. Funding for these would come from the Article 44 sales tax revenues designed for local economic development. And the Economic Development Board is recommending that we spend $100,000 on these grant programs. There, I won't move through the list of statutes, but there are statutes that support these type programs throughout North Carolina. And Donnie, of course, can look through those and make sure that that's all, we're all legal on these. But the proposed administration of the grants, we're recommending that we try to partner with Mountain Biz Works or a similar organization to administer those programs. Of course, if we're not able to do that, we can administer them in-house. So the recommendation from the Board of, from the Economic Development Board is the Board of Commissioners to establish a Madison County Historic Preservation Grant Program, allocate $100,000 from Article 44 Economic Development Funds, and authorize staff to engage with Mountain Biz Works or comparable partner to administer the program. And there is a back sheet along with my memo there that basically gives you an outline. Would you like me to go through that or did you get enough from just my initial memo? Kind of understand the program, how it works?
Well, I'll just speak for me. I mean, we discussed it at the Economic Development Meeting rather extensively, so I'm, I feel good about it. But I would encourage any of my fellow commissioners that might have any questions to, at this time would be now, would be the appropriate time to do so.
One of the things, as is proposed, it is a matching grant program. So the property owner or the tenant with the property owner's permission would have to match the $5,000 or more in order to receive the funds. Or of course, if their project is less than $5,000, they would have to match whatever their grant would give.
And obviously, this is just a small step on the road to recovery for all these businesses. My question that I failed to ask at the Economic Development Meeting, are there, are there any businesses that would be excluded because of the historical ties?
There are 40 buildings that are included in the National Register Historic District in Marshall, and there are 14 that are in Hot Springs. So I don't know, I can't tell you right off the top of my head in terms of buildings that would be excluded, but those are the buildings that would be eligible, is those 40 that are on the National Register of certain places. You could actually go online and find that information. I can email it to you as well if you'd like to see, but those buildings are identified on the line.
Brad, I know you said potentially, I guess, utilizing somewhere like Mountain Biz Works for the administration of it. Would we still, would our finance department still be responsible for some of the, the desk work as far as the grant application, the administration, and the finance?
We haven't fleshed any of that out at this point yet. I think one of the next things that we have to do is, in order to actually approve the program, if you're determined to do that, we would have to have a public hearing to allocate the money for that program. And we could have a lot more of those kind of questions answered about who's going to administer it and those type of things done by then.
Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, I ask for information, Colonel, and for permission for us to proceed down this avenue, bring back a recommendation for implementation.
Exactly. And there, you know, there's, you may have other questions. There's, in terms of allocating the money, how allocation would be to the two different communities, and those type of decisions will still yet have to be made.
Yeah. I'm going to go ahead and ask one more just because I can.
Yes, sir.
As far as, I guess, the oversight, the inspection, just ensuring that the grant funds are being used as the intended purpose without ultimately being a third party's responsibility or us?
Us being the Economic Development Board?
Yes, the Economic Development Board.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll throw out as well, on Thursday of this week, I'm having, I've got a meeting with the President of Mountain Biz Works. And if you guys have any specific questions, email me, and I'll be glad to, to work that into our discussion. If you have any questions, concerns, anything at all about dealing with Mountain Biz Works. Same goes to you, Brad, if there's anything there that you would like to make sure that we discuss. And so that's this Thursday, so get it to me as quick as you can, please.
Yes, sir.
That way, if I have any questions back to you for clarification, I can make sure that I ask in the spirit that you attended. All right?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Jim. So your questions, comments, guidance, that concludes my portion except for the portion I will go into closed session with.
I'll just add, for our downtown business owners, folks, here for Marshall and also if there's anybody maybe from Hot Springs that might be watching at home, you know, the, the speed that you guys started and kept going and got your cleanup done was phenomenal. And, and many of you that, we've had private conversations throughout this process, the speed of government is painfully slow, and, and, and I recognize that. My father lost a business to a flood many years ago. I personally understand firsthand what you guys are going through. So we're, we're trying to do what we can to expedite things as quickly as possible. It's not going to be as fast as you guys want it to be, but we're trying to do it as fast as we possibly can. And, and whatever resources we could try to bring in and access, we've made one trip to Washington, D.C. There may be a subsequent trip to Washington, D.C. after January 20th. If we don't get what we want this time, we'll go back after January 20th and take another bite at the apple. So, you know, just let you know, we are, we're trying to bring assets and relief and help into this area, into our county to, to help our folks that are struggling. So we will, we'll continue those efforts. Any suggestions that you guys have? I would love to hear them. I'm sure Brad, if you haven't already been in contact with Brad, any bright ideas you guys have that, if you think something that, you know, don't assume we've already thought of it. If you have a good idea that you think is worthy of sharing, please share it. And I've got my business cards. I'm happy to give them to you after the meeting tonight, or you can access my email through the county website, whichever way you prefer. And we're going to try and do everything we can to try and prop you guys up any way we can as a county. Unfortunately, we don't have the, we don't have the financial capabilities that some of our neighboring counties have, so we have to, you know, we, we do have to rely on, on some additional funding sources in order to try to open those dollars up for you guys. But, you know, we're, we're willing to listen, willing to help, do whatever we can, and just share it with us, let us know what's, what's going on so we can try to keep those lines of communication open. All right? At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session for, let me get my notes back in front of me here. We're going to go into NC General Statute 143-318-dot-11a3 for attorney-client privilege, and also North Carolina General Statute 143-318-dot-11a6 for personnel. I've got a motion by Vice Chairman Hensley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any discussion? Hearing none. Move to a vote. And we will do that after a brief recess. Thank you. Thank you.[439.47]
Okay, so this time, we would, I will entertain a motion that we re-enter our meeting for this evening.
Come on.
Motion by Commissioner Wise, or second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Hansley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, we're back into open session. All right, we are currently back into open session at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Vice Chairman Hansley, is there a second?
Um, go ahead.
Andy, are we doing this right?
Were you gonna hear an update for anything?
Courthouse update, maybe?
Are we gonna do, are we gonna do an update, or?
Yeah, so, uh...
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
We gotta modify the agenda to put in the courthouse, we're going to withdraw that motion and that stuff.
All right, so, all right, this time, Commissioner, Vice Chairman Hansley withdraws his motion to adjourn, and at this time, we will have, we will amend, I need a motion to amend the agenda for a courthouse update. I'll make it in the form of a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Garrison, any discussion?
Are we sure?
Hearing none, all in favor? Colonel, can you give us a quick courthouse update?
I'd give you the courthouse, um, our main courthouse in Marshall sustains significant damage. The first floor is unusable, and we're looking at somewhere twenty-four to forty months to get it repaired. With that being, and our sprinkle shelton building is a catastrophic loss. So that represents twenty-five office spaces with sprinkle shelton building in our courthouse. We have begin procurement procedures to...
Okay, so this time, we would, I will entertain a motion that we re-enter our meeting for this evening?
Come on.
Motion by Commissioner Wise, or second? Second by Vice Chairman Hensley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, we're back into open session. All right, we are currently back into open session at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Vice Chairman Hensley, is there a second? Andy, are we doing this right?
Were you gonna hear an update for anything?
Courthouse update, maybe?
Are we gonna do, are we gonna do an update, or aren't we?
So, uh...
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
We gotta modify the agenda to put in the courthouse, I'm going to withdraw that motion and that's it.
At this time, Commissioner, Vice Chairman Hensley withdraws his motion to adjourn, and at this time, we will have, we will amend, I need a motion to amend the agenda for a courthouse update. I'll make it in the form of a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Garrison, any discussion?
Are we sure?
Hearing none, all in favor? Colonel, can you give us a quick courthouse update?
Hey, Jim, as you know, the courthouse, at Baye Courthouse in Marshall sustains significant damage. The first floor is unusable, and we're looking at somewhere 24 to 40 months to get it repaired. With that being, and our Sprinkle Shelton building is a catastrophic loss. So that represents 25 office spaces with the Sprinkle Shelton building in our courthouse. We have began procurement procedures to obtain a temporary courthouse in Carolina Lane, along with modular office spaces. FEMA has requested a cost analysis associated with the courthouse. The first, and the cost analysis means you're looking at a different method to procurement, for a lease or a buy. The first one, we have nothing local that can fit at courthouse and our DA and, that was the first course of action, analysis. Second one is whether it is more economically feasible to purchase or lease these facilities no more than 35 months. That is what tomorrow, we will gather and lay out the costs and the price associated with a lease versus a purchase. Either way, with the lease, it goes back. These facilities come with a certificate of origin, they stay with the wheels and the trailers stays mobile, does not have a deed or a title with it. At the end of the period of lease, we have to, see with the lease, it goes back. If we have purchased it, we have to sell it and give the proceeds back to FEMA of what we have, what is left over at the end of our use. And they will only fund it for the amount of time it takes to rebuild or move to a new facility. For the Sprinkle Shelton building, it's 40 months, for our courthouse, it's somewhere between 24 and 40 months. So you will see more action, more procurement action, as we put the RFP out, potentially on Monday, to request vendors give us prices for purchase and lease for an 11,000 square foot courthouse and six temporary facilities. I think that's the highlight of where we're at. Now, subject to Donnie, he's been in over sessions today.
As far as insurance, how much did the insurance, like, bring into that?
The insurance will not pay for any of that facility. We had a $1 million cap on our insurance policy for all of our facilities. Incredibly low money, I think it's, and we have, we will eat that up with just a service master, cleaning contract. Insurance will not pay.
But they give us a million?
Yes, they will give us a million, we have not received anything yet.
The service master bill is a million dollars?
Four, uh, 480,000. But between the Sprinkle Shelton building cleanup, the library cleanup, and our courthouse cleanup, we'll eat through the million.
Why did we clean the Sprinkle Shelton building up if it's total loss?
We have to, or demolish it, whatever we do with it, there's gonna be money that we have to put...
You want to clarify, is that, you use the term catastrophic loss, that's what I've...
It has been deemed catastrophic loss by both our insurance, our building inspectors, and FEMA.
Do you mean total loss?
Yes. And now we're waiting on the state historic preservation guys to come in and tell us, do we have to leave the facade in place, and what we do behind the walls with the building?
So is FEMA going to buy that building off of us? I got that question asked of me today.
Under mitigation, that right there? FEMA can buy the building, but we have not hit it into that phase of discussion yet.
Okay, 'cause that wall borders...
Yes.
Feet and seeing code.
There's two private properties affected by the Sprinkle Shelton building, and we know that. And that was part of the discussion yesterday with FEMA, when we say that it's a lost and demolished, it's really not a demolished, the whole building, because it is tied to other buildings. The interior walls are shared, two private entities.
Did the floor came in on that?
The floor, uh, the first floor is in the basement, second floor, where the first floor used to be, and unfortunately now is a hazmat, considered area, because of the mold that is in the building.
Did the first floor go into the basement at the time, or sometime later?
Both. Some of it was already done for construction before Jeff Senior was working on it, the rest of it was all... You actually can't, if you went to the old child support office, you could not open up the door to get into child support office, because of the mud and stuff inside that room.
Or break, or breach.
Pretty used to ours. This is a nasty, rough place to get in there, it is catastrophic, is a term that's appropriate for it.
And also, the parole people, is, is that our responsibility, are they our responsibility? Is that why we've got them over at Elizabeth Lane?
It's our responsibility to provide them office space.
So we don't charge the state for office space?
We do. You cut the lease, yeah.
So they leased the Sprinkle Shelton building with us, so that's why we moved them over, over to there?
That was Elizabeth Lane.
Any additional questions?
So then really the next thing for the county, our staff, is we have to get engineering and architecture assessments of what it would cost to rebuild these facilities, to submit to FEMA for reimbursement. Those come with about $3,500 price tax, to bring in architect and engineer, that will be covered by FEMA also. They, it's just a, there's a lot of steps that we have to follow, in this Papa G, follow the Papa G guideline that FEMA put into place.
Now, through the last two, three months, you've said a lot about this, everything's FEMA reimbursed. Are we guaranteeing this money from FEMA, or is we just hoping?
I can, I can tell you that, that is the reason. You've got, you've got an excellent staff, and you've got Carrie, you've got Mandy, you've got Hannah, and your county manager are attending these FEMA meetings that happen every week. And then FEMA sets up a ton of seminars and web access, and they provide you with materials to say, if you want FEMA minds, this is what you have to do. So, there's a lot of red tape to it, but they do an excellent job of giving you this information. Now, you gotta read it, you gotta know what you've got, and then you've got, that there're FEMA folks at these meetings, and you can tell them what you want to do, they'll give you an opinion on doing it. If they can't answer it, they'll get somebody on the phone, they'll run it up the, up the line. So they're there to help you, but if you don't take advantage of it, then you risk not getting the reimbursement. All of the, these folks here, in addition to their jobs, all of this material has to be uploaded into a portal. There's a ton of work to it. We didn't hire a consultant to do that, so the good thing about all of this is, is that all of these people that are working on it, their time, if they keep on their timesheet, what they are doing solely for the FEMA part of it, we can get reimbursed for those fees up to 5% of the total cost of the project. So that's a good thing, in that your staff is gonna get paid by FEMA to do this. Uh, but it's daunting, I mean...
Everything I've told you so far that FEMA's reimbursed, our local representative, who is the next link to the CRC, which is the Regional Approval Authority, has approvals and will submit on our behalf. She wouldn't say is FEMA reimbursable if she hadn't submitted it.
So you're pretty calm.
I'm very, I'm very confident in everything we have done so far.
Now, so far, everything has been issued for cost under what's called emergency exigent circumstances. And when you get those services, you avoid the strict procurement, okay? So it's pretty, it's a whole lot easier to get reimbursement when you don't have a choice. But now that the emergency and the exigency is out of it, and we're looking at getting this other money, that's when the more stringent bids, bidding requirements come in. So this is the first one that we're actually having to do for the full procurement, is all...
This is more difficult than what some of our sister counties are doing, because we lost a courthouse, and we need to have the courthouse, we lost a portion of the courthouse in the Sprinkle Shelton building. So to replace, to replace that is one pot of money. But to find a temporary facility is another pot of money, and they can't tie to each other, have to be in separate lanes and separate projects. So there, there's really some, I ain't say red tape, but it is, and you have to follow it to the letter of what the Papa G puts out, and the, our FEMA team has been pretty diligent with us, coaching us in the right way, as best I can say, I'm happy with our FEMA guys.
And it's just saying what, you know, what Mike Winkle said earlier, is they can send all this money to Ukraine and other places, and we have to do all this.
Thanks for that, Nick, Colonel.
Any further questions? I think that's it for open session.
At some point, it might be good if we scheduled, everybody at least take a look with you, pictures speak lines, just to gain some real perspective on the hurdles that you would have to contend with with the courthouse and Sprinkle Shelton. We forget that.
And is there, would, would there be a benefit to the sanity of you and the staff, if we were to be able to bring in some temporary, uh, part-time help or anything like that, clerical wise? Or is that just gonna, is that gonna throw a monkey wrench in things?
We've had the conversation with Carrie and Hannah and myself, right now we're comfortable. There, there's six main projects we're working on, and we have, those six have their individual project worksheets that's working through the FEMA process. Um, I think that capturing Hannah's work since the start of this, is really, her whole salary should be reimbursable, if something we capture at the end. There's a portion of my salary that should be dedicated back to the county, instead of having a consultant. And I think there's five or six people across the county that that's gonna apply to, that we submit that. And me personally, I think we have a better common understanding of what's going on than bringing somebody in and having that layer of additional bureaucracy. Right now, it's in house, I asked Manny the same thing. I'm comfortable with where we're at, it's been a lot of burden on the staff, but I think it has served the county well by having the internal staff do it. Agreed?
I think so, and I think, you know, a lot of it hinges on finance and what they're most comfortable with, because they are the ones who are performing most of those duties.
If it becomes, if it gets to the point before everybody loses their mind, you know, we need to, you know, if there's something we can address to provide relief or help or assistance, we need to do it.
Sure.
Let us know, don't, you know, we don't, we don't wanna burn anybody out or anybody off unintentionally.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, any other comments, questions before we close out?
I think in the future, having a $1 million cap is not very well advised for buildings we have. I mean, if the bypass angle of the administrative building burnt, it would be way more than needed.
And I gotta defer any better answer, I think this was floodplain related, and this was not associated with any of our other facilities.
Got you.
This is one of the, you know, top of us.
Got you. And the other thing we have to keep in mind is all of our buildings are incredibly old. So no matter how much money you pay, there are not many insurance companies out there that are gonna insure buildings of that age replacement costs. So, I mean, that's just, I'm sure there might be one out there, but I'm sure it's gonna cost an arm and a leg if you find it.
I'm gonna give you example, let's say that the sheriff's office burns...
Yeah.
Million dollars.
Now, that building, I don't remember the...
But the Colonel's already said this is a floodplain building.
Correct.
But this building, it's old.
Yeah. It costs more to replace it than it's actually worth, is the problem. Any additional discussions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wise, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? We stand adjourned.